Good evening Sacramento. I'm calling us back from closed session. Reporting out. Oh. All right, if everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm next.
Where's our resolution?
Okay, reporting out from... Oh, there's like a whole thing, I'm not even looking. Tonight's my first night doing Chair of the Board. So there's a list that I'm gonna follow today and I'm gonna do my best. That is not it. Yeah. You sure?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll be reading the broadcast statement because our student board member is not here this evening. Members of the public may address the Board on non-agenda items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board. Public comment may be emailed to Public Communic... Is this the right one? That's public comment, sorry. I'm getting there, just... I did, I had it here. Congratulations, President Phillips, we got it today. Okay, this meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will be aired Monday, October 9 at 12:00 PM and Wednesday, October 11 at 6:00 PM. It is also webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable's 14's YouTube channel. We welcome members of the audience to address the Board. Please complete a speaker form which are located in the back of the room and give them to our communications representative along with any handouts you may have for the Board prior to the conclusion of the items presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the Board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is listed on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also either turn off your cellphones or place them on silent mode. Good job Grace. Alrighty, so we are now moving into stellar student to be introduced by Board Member Pritchett. All right, thank you. We have two students tonight that were selected as stellar students by their principal, Anisha H. Kobelt at George Washington Carver School of Arts and Sciences. Two we have tonight Kat Bailey and Ruby Rose Lewis. If both of you guys can come up to the podium. Hi. All right. I'm gonna read something for both of you. All right. Kat Bailey is a senior and current Vice President of the Student Council at George Washington Carver School of Arts and Sciences. They have been enrolled at Waldorf Schools since kindergarten and personally chose Carver to continue their education in high school in a Waldorf-inspired method. Kat has also loved the school environment, learning and being immersed as much as possible in helping peers and teachers with anything they may need especially in regards to art. As soon as it was available, ran for Student Council Secretary for their freshman year. But as soon as a position as a sophomore and junior, as a sophomore and junior as Vice President this year, Kat's teachers recognized them as involved in just about everything, puts 100% effort in all they do and they have really learned to self-advocate. Despite all their extra duties this year, they really committed themselves to academic improvement. Kat has been a role model student to the Carver team, has enjoyed seeing them rise as phoenix. Sorry, this is like a four-point font that I'm reading right here, so I apologize. And Ruby Rose Lewis was born in Sacramento, California, in a small neighborhood called Lake Crest. She lived with her mom and dad for 16 years. She was always a happy, energetic, loud and creative child. Sometimes she was bullied or questioned about her personality. That made her sad and angry, but she found a way to put creativity into writing stories and drawing. Rose now lives with my dad and grandmother, still getting support from her funny and also energetic mother. Rose thanks her parents for their amazing support. Without them, she wouldn't be here. She hopes to achieve her dreams as a writer and animator. Rose Lewis is an excellent student in math class. She participates in math discussions and works very hard every day. Rose is generally the most positive person her teachers have met. They always encourage others to strive to be a better version of themselves and not give up. The Carver team is honored to be their voice of choice. Congratulations. Would you both like to say something?
I first want to say it's a big honor to be here. I never thought that me being myself would lead me up to this. I'm not gonna go into detail, but I've been through a lot throughout my school years ever since I was in kindergarten. So me being here is a big surprise and I never thought about it. I am so glad I get to be next to Kat because they are one of my favorite people that I've met in my band class. So it's a real honor being here, my family being here and you being here. And I want to thank my teachers.
Much of what I would say is verbatim to what Rose said, but it is such an honor to be here. I am so glad to be here, just seen by you people. It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity and I cannot believe that I was chosen. So thank you everyone.
Carver is definitely a unique gem in our community, so congratulations to you both. I'm gonna come down with a certificate, we're gonna take a picture and I invite your family and teachers and your principal, if she's here, to come and join us for a picture and our Board of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, awesome. I'll get on this side.
Thank you.
I know exactly what to say now. Announcement of action taken in closed session, please.
Good evening Vice President Phillips. There are two announcements coming out of closed session this evening. First, the Board approved a settlement agreement related to special education services by a vote of four to one with Member Caillada voting against the item and Members Rhodes and Singh absent. The second announcement will be made by Superintendent Allen.
Thank you. I am pleased to announce that the Board approved by a vote of five to zero with Boards members Singh and Rhodes absent the approval appointment of Ronaldo Shackleford as Principal of the School of Engineering and Sciences.
Thank you Superintendent. Moving to Agenda Adoption. Roll call, we're all in favor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on. Public comment this evening.
We have nine.
Okay, so we have nine, that's two minutes per comment. And we are eager to hear who the first person is.
Our first speaker is Michael Madden with Bridget Madden and Israel Madden yielding their time for a total of six minutes.
Thank you.
Hello Trustees, Ms. Pritchett, it's good to see you, Ms. Villa. Could you hand those out please? I'm here on behalf of NJBCC. Trustee Pritchett was here when we were approved. We're giving out, as slight as it is, there's a lot more to it. I don't want to take up too much time, so I'm not gonna go completely through it. There has been some legal notices and there is a vote of no confidence. We're concerned, we have a, as you can see, we're not happy with our scores. Our charter's not being implemented and it has not been implemented. There is pictures in there, you'll see, we do not have an agricultural anything right now. Our concerns are with our current Principal, Kristy Wells Artman. We have dealt with the district, there are emails in there, you will see the people that were involved and some of the conversations. What we are here to request from the Board is a recommendation for removal of our Principal. We opened this school, you'll see the first page of our original charter and it said that we wanted to be something different. This Board had closed down NJ, or Joseph Bonheim. And we had also said, not only were we gonna be something different, we were gonna help grow the district because we were a charter. I will circle back to that. The thing is, is like I said, first and foremost, we have teachers, it's kind of chaotic. We have great teachers, we have great staff, but there's no leadership. And so they're not sure what they have to do. They're sitting there collectively voting out things that are on the charter because they've never been trained in these things. So we can do that, we can take care of it as founders and we do have the people that can support us. Basically, we also have competency issues. I won't really speak to it too much, but it is the last section if you want to look at it. And this circles back to like growing the district. If you were to look at our website right now, you might not think we're open. You go by, we have a marquee, you go by New Joseph Bonheim during the summer, it's not even saying enroll now. Our attendance has dropped, I realize COVID and it can be an issue going on throughout districts. But we have to be better than that. You know, I know we're also, because we are a charter, we are held against state schools. I know our standing is real low. Personally, I don't care about our standing. I want those numbers to be 100% for all students, just for the sake of them learning. And it's not happening. And like I said, what we are asking the Board is for a recommendation to unfortunately... One of the policies we opened with was, because we were asking certain things, because our curriculum was the charter part, one of the things we opened with a policy that was, it might not be a fit for everyone and if it's not, we will help you get placement somewhere else in the district. We're at a point now where it's not a fit. It hasn't been for a while, but we're coming to you. And I know there's other people here that have some testimonies to their experiences. But our concern as a founder is, like I said, well, we have two years to renewal. You're not gonna renew us, not with these test scores. You're gonna ask about the Agriculture Institute, did you see the picture of that garden? I mean, there's a lot of lip service being done. If you look at our LCAP, farm-built, this, it's just not happening folks. And we can make it happen. Parent participation has been blocked out, you know. It will say it's happening, parents are afraid. Personally, I'm not... The Brown Act, the Public Records Act, I have emails in there where it was said, don't send emails to Lisa or myself, she's another co-founder. And these are just agendas and minutes. That's violent, I mean, there's a, right now, an ongoing violation of the Public Records Act going on. And we're all here for the same thing, is these kids' education. To go to that last section I was talking about, that is our concern about some competency. And I don't really want to share it too much publicly, I think you guys can see that, what I'm kind of talking about. And the poor deer couldn't get her name right. So, you know, help us out, we're asking for that recommendation to the district. We're asking for an interim principal until, so we can do the posting, we can do the interviewing process, we're aware of how to do it. And my time's up, I guess. But thank you so much for your time and have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Next speaker please.
Next. Next speaker is Arthur Alaman followed by Veronica Alaman and Prince Moreno.
Good evening sir.
Good evening Superintendent, Mrs. Lisa Allen and Board Members. I'm not much of a public speaker, so I'll be frank, clear and to the point. Like Mr. Madden was saying, we opened up nine years ago with the intention of this being a model school. And we have worked very hard and put in a lot of time. We have great community input, great community participation. Up till a few years ago, things just started going south. Recently, Mrs. Amanda Goldman, the Chief Academic Officer, gave us a reality check. She was, she spoke at our monthly steering committee. And she very clearly stated, if you guys were to go before the Board tomorrow to get a renewal, chances are you would not get renewal based on your test scores and based on not following the charter as it was approved by this very Board. I'm sure you remember that, Mrs. Pritchett. So we're asking the Board to really consider, take a look at what's going on. I have made communication or contacted just about every department head in the district. I have sent you all Board Members an email and so everybody's aware of what's going on over there. We have great teachers right now and we want to keep them. It's getting harder and harder to retain teachers and to retain students. We have lost over 100 students within the last couple of years because of this very person we're talking about. So either, you know, you guys need to see this as for what it is. We do need to make some changes. And this is the first time we're coming up here to voice our opinions and our concerns and I hope it'll be our last time because we will come back.
Thank you Ms. Alaman.
As you know, Mrs. Pritchett. Okay, thank you and have a good evening.
Thanks. Next speaker please.
Veronica Alaman. Prince Moreno.
Good evening. Good evening. Hi, my name is Prince Moreno, I ain't Prince, I go to Nudus Bonheim Elementary School. Been here since I was in kindergarten and I love my school and my friends and some of my teachers. And I just want you to know, I didn't want to go to school a lot of the time because of my Principal. She said mean things to me like I'm going to go to prison, like my dad. She has said that to some of my friends too because their dads have prison records. She uses our confidential records against us to talk about us and label us future criminals. She has even said, I'm going to go to juvie. She also uses cameras to watch us, but missed when I got jumped and I got suspended for defending myself because I was surrounded by a group of boys. She makes me feel uncomfortable when she puts her arms around me and puts my face on her vest. When any of us complain, she does more things to us. We all use our, we're all of us are scared to say anything, some of my favorite teachers have left. We really cared about us, who really cared about us, because how she is, please help us so more of my friends don't leave the school and we can have the best last school year. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Next speaker please.
Next speaker, Sophia Navarro followed by Angelica Moreno and Elizabeth Moreno.
Hi, my name is Sophia. My school is great, I love my friends and some of my old teachers. But my Principal is not the best. I've seen and heard about her picking on my cousin, my auntie was about to pull my cousin out of NJB because of the Principal. I don't really feel comfortable around her, neither do the students, so please consider all of these parents, students, staffs and teachers' requests for a new Principal.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
Angelica Moreno.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Angelica Moreno. I am a former student at NJB during my seven years there. There was many times I did not want to go to school there because I was bullied by the Principal. The teachers didn't protect me and the staff members were also bullied. This year I graduated, which was 2021, I was labeled as a cyberbully because I spoke up about how I felt regarding the Principal and a TikTok trend. That year I was spinning and flaring many times, I'm grateful I made it through those seven years. A lot of people gave up and moved schools, including the staff. We lost some of our best teachers, I am now at K Carson, which is now Umoja. I am also a, I'm almost a straight A student and the Vice President of the eighth grade class. I want the NJB kids to know that there is hope and I hope that you can help them, so no other kids experience what I did, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening Board Members. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for approving our counselor within our school last year. The students, parents, founders, teachers, steering committee members, community members of NJB have all requested oversight and intervention, immediate tutoring for all underserved communities. Our students deserve the type of top-level education an established district of over 169 years can provide. I am a former ESL student of the district and a former student of Joseph Bonheim. Therefore, I know we can do better to serve our students and our community. Thank you for your time and we look forward to a positive outcome.
Thank you.
That's our final speaker.
With that, we will move forward to Communications. First up, SCTA. Good evening ma'am.
Good evening Vice President Phillips. It's nice to see everyone tonight and good evening Superintendent Allen. Nikki Malevsky, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. And although we have a huge backlog of problems left over from the Jorge Aguilar regime, we do appreciate the new spirit of collaboration of the new administration. For example, you should know that your new Assistant Superintendent of Special Ed, Crystal Thomas, she started her job early this week and met with our Special Ed Work Group yesterday. The Special Ed Work Group was required in our agreement that we made in 2022 and under Jorge Aguilar's regime, your staff met with us one time all of last year to talk about special education. This now, with your new leadership and your new Head of Special Ed, she comes into work early before her days even start to meet with our team, talk about what's going on. It was a very productive meeting, it was an introductory meeting and Ms. Thomas listened very closely, responded thoughtfully and then insisted that we meet again soon and followed up that night with new dates to meet. It's a big change and it means, it can mean so much if we keep this up. Some other updates and highlights I wanted to tell you about is, you know, the new contract agreement is on its way to being fully implemented. Regular teachers saw an increase in their checks last Friday. It was great for morale. Community Schools MOU is moving along. We had a follow-up meeting with Iris Taylor and Mary Harden Young, working on developing a job description, collaborating on a timeline and, you know, appointing members to the district-wide committee. Recruitment and Retention Committee met this morning. We met with Tiffany Smith Simmons and Pia Wong from SAC State and had another productive meeting. We really, we dream of doing some really proactive things to retain and to train, recruit and retain the best and most diverse educators for our students. We're also having ongoing regular meetings with Quincy McCarron and Dan Shilak and the HR team that have been very useful in problem solving. I don't want to kid you guys or anyone, there's still a bunch of issues out there that are really overwhelming and it's gonna take a lot of effort for us to address. You know, specifically in Special Ed and there's a lot to be accomplished in the next year. We hope that we're off to a good start. We hope that things get settled really soon with SEIU and that we can move forward with other things and new negotiations and solve a bunch of these problems together. So I wanted to say I wanted to cede the rest of my time to SEIU. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening sir.
Good evening, I'm Jim Riffel from SEIU, I'm the Vice President at this point. I have two messages to read. One is from Carla, Carla Fawcett, and the other is from one of our bargaining team members. Carla's message first. This message is from Chapter President Carla Fawcett as she is currently out from knee surgery. Good evening Board Members and Superintendent Lisa Allen. The Board and Superintendent should be made aware that many regions are elevating their minimum wage standards. In our district, the current minimum wage is $15 and so... In our district, the current minimum wage is $15.60 per hour, while fast-food employees effective January 2025 will receive a minimum wage of $20 per hour, and healthcare workers are expected to have their minimum wage raised to $23 to $25 an hour in 2024. I want to express my sincere gratitude for the opportunity to participate in negotiations with the SCUSD team. It's truly wonderful to have a diverse group of district employees from various departments involved, along with the new attorney, Roy Coombs. The district team has been and continues to move forward in a positive and passionate manner. There are open and constructive dialogues, and everyone at the negotiating table is treated with respect and given opportunities to voice their opinions and ask questions when necessary. We collectively recognize that achieving an agreement that pleases everyone necessitates a generous amount of time and patience. Hastening the process is not in the best interest of any party involved if we intend to attain the most advantageous results for everyone concerned. SEIU holds the belief that through collaborative efforts towards shared objectives, we are advancing, and we hold optimism that we will soon reach our initial tentative agreement. Recognizing the importance of not hurrying negotiations is vital, as hastiness may lead to errors that could be regrettable for all parties involved down the line. Thank you, Carla. The second is from one of our bargaining team members. The Sacramento City Unified School District works to provide an education that ensures equality to its students. Will the district work to provide equality to all of its employees? Some of the classified workers are the lowest-paid employees in the district. The following lowest-paid classified workers are my fellow coworkers at the district: instructional aides, health aides, custodians, campus monitors, and food service assistants. These lowest-paid classified workers perform essential services that support the daily operations of the schools. The SEIU bargaining team is negotiating with the district bargaining team towards a $20-an-hour minimum wage for the lowest-paid classified workers. Will the district have the conviction to provide a wage that improves the financial situation of the lowest-paid workers? One worker, a health aide, that has 44 years as a district employee, still earns less than $20 an hour. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel. Up next, TCS. Teamsters. And last but not least, UPE. Moving on, District Advisory Committees. Student Advisory Council. Welcome, scholars.
Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent Allen. Thank you. I'm Maggie Kemper.
And I am Miranda Grimberg.
And this is the Student and Advisory Council right here. We represent high school students from Burbank, Kennedy, School of Engineering and Sciences, CICAM McClatchy, and West Campus. We are actually openly recruiting, oops, we are actually openly recruiting from school sites that are not being represented at the moment. And for this school year, the SAC will be following a youth participatory action research model, also known as YPAR, to critically research and analyze the problems currently facing SUSD youth and organize to take action against those problems.
We have spent the last month on boarding, team building, and brainstorming areas of interest. These include, but are not limited to, 504 plan accessibility, accessible gender-neutral restrooms, dress code policies, equity in anti-racism, foster youth support, improved school campus facilities, menstrual products accessibility, mental health supports and services, school pushout, and sexual assault awareness and support. In the coming weeks, we will solidify our areas of focus and will work with SCUSD students, staff, and community members to further develop our initiatives with the intentions of creating long-term systematic change. We strongly believe that in order for our district to truly be student-centered, students need to be at the forefront of all decision-making processes. We will be providing updates on a bimonthly basis as we work to ensure that youth voices are not just tokenized, but instead heard, honored, and uplifted within this district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. CAC, Community Advisory Committee. DELAC. LCAP. Black African-American Advisory Board. Good evening, Mr. Gladney.
Good evening. Yeah, hopefully I'll use all three minutes. Good evening. It's great to be standing in front of you all again tonight. We recently had our most recent Executive Committee meeting, which was this Tuesday, a couple of days ago. Coming forward, we have, on the ninth, we have our family and community engagement meeting on Monday night, the ninth, and on the 12th, we have our district accountability meeting. Collectively, those two subcommittees, as well as our executive committee work, as well as our holistic work as a general body, drive our work to really push the implementation of our board-adopted recommendations. We do recognize that we do have a tremendous opportunity right now with the new climate within the district and the current leadership, and we hope to build on that momentum and leverage it so that we can accelerate the implementation of our recommendations, which are core to the improved outcomes for Black and African-American students in this district. We have been partnering increasingly with our board liaison or our district liaison, Mr. Danny Rullieri, and we truly believe that his work at Oak Ridge and in a community of need and that has been impacted by the historical failures of this district will be a tremendous asset, and we look forward to partnering with him collaboratively and leveraging his leadership to get the outcomes that we seek and that we need. We ask for your continued support as well as an elected body as we navigate this space of new leadership within the district so that we can better understand our role within the district under new leadership and what that means for our families and scholars that we represent. I do thank you all for welcoming some of our other executive committee members that have come before you, and our goal is to show many more faces because we're much greater than an individual or collective group of a small few people, and we really are truly seeking to represent as much as possible the Black and African-American population within our district. So we look forward to partnering with you all. We thank you for our current partnership with Danny, our previous partnership with Lisa Allen, Iris Taylor, Vincent Harris, and we look forward to working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladney. Moving on to special presentation. 9.1, Approved Resolution Number 3351, Recognition of Filipino-American History Month, presented by Board Member Judge Jeet Singh.
All right. Thank you, President Phillips. All right, I will, I'm excited to recognize, it's October, is Filipino-American History Month. I'm going to read, I'll read a couple of these lines to really capture the impact that the Filipino-American community has had and just our recognition of students, faculty, staff, and community members who hail from this diverse community. So let's get started. So, "Whereas this is an appropriate time to promote and reflect on the richness of Filipino and Filipino-American history and culture, and to provide all Americans with the opportunity to learn, honor, and appreciate Filipino-American identity and their historic and social contributions to the fabric of the United States of America. Whereas the earliest documented evidence of Filipinos in the continental United States occurred on October 18, 1587, one Mariners under Spanish command referred to as Luzones Indios landed in Morro Bay, California. Whereas today, the Filipino-American community is the third-largest Asian-American group in the United States with an estimated population of 4.2 million people, and the second-largest Asian-American group in California. Whereas the California Department of Education first recognized October as Filipino-American History Month in 2006 by placing it on its celebrations calendar, the 111th Congress of the United States recognized it in November 2009, and the California State Legislature recognized it in September 2017." So I'm going to skip down to the bottom, whereas preserving our Filipino communities throughout California and the United States is critical to the preservation of Filipino culture, history, traditions, and heritage, and to the preservation of our state and national history, as well as our local, state, and national future. And whereas the 20,000-plus strong Filipino community plays a vital role in the city of Sacramento's rich history, thereby helping to shape its development and landscape. So now, therefore, be it resolved, SCUSD recognizes Celebration of Filipino-American History Month in October 2023, a testament to the advancement of Filipino-Americans, a time to reflect on and remember the many notable contributions that Filipino-Americans have made to the United States, and a time to renew efforts towards the research and examination of history and culture so as to provide an opportunity for all people of the United States to learn more about Filipino-Americans and to appreciate the historic contribution of Filipino-Americans to the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That is an action item. Any public comment?
There is none.
Thank you. And hearing from my board members, my fellow colleagues. I'm eager to hear any comments, if y'all have any. We are good. Moving that action item. Ms. Pritchett moves. Ms. Jean seconds. Roll call.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Kayata.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, 9.2. It's an action item, Approved Resolution Number 3352, which is the recognition of the Week of the School Administrator. Mr. Duong, Ms. Wright, Ms. Shafto, I see you all. You may begin.
Good evening, Board Vice President Phillips, Trustees, Superintendent Allen. My name is Yvonne Wright, Chief Academic Officer, and with me tonight I have April Shafto, Instructional Assistant Superintendent, and Tuan Dong, also Instructional Assistant Superintendent. I'm very honored tonight to be able to present the resolution on recognition of the Week of the School Administrator, the week of October 8 through the 14. The Week of the School Administrator is celebrated the second full week of October nationally in our state, our county, and in our district. It is an opportunity for us in our district to recognize and acknowledge the administrators who support the students, staff, community, in support of our students and their success. We know that great schools are led by great administrators, and great districts are led by great district office leadership and great superintendents. So this week, we celebrate and appreciate and recognize the dedicated and hard-working administrators at all of our schools and throughout our district. Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education, Resolution Number 3288, Recognition of October 8 through the 14, 2023, as the Week of the School Administrators. Where
Whereas the state of California has declared the second full week of October as the Week of the School Administrator, and whereas an educated public serves as the foundation of our democracy, and whereas our school administrators are passionate, lifelong learners who believe in the value of a quality public education and
I'm shorter. Whereas our administrators touch, mold, and mentor so many lives with lasting effect, and whereas excellence in our state and districts begins with our administrators, and whereas the administrators overcome obstacles and challenges daily to make a difference in the lives of students, families, and staff.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education commends our administrators and encourages parents and the community to recognize the efforts of principals as we celebrate the Week of October 8 through the 14, 2023, as the Week of the School Administrators.
Thank you kindly. Is there any public comment on that?
There is none.
Thank you. Colleagues. Ms. Jean.
As a teacher, I can definitely wholeheartedly say that a strong, solid administrator is one of the most important and effective parts of a thriving school. When an administrator is a leader with grace and care and compassion, but collaborative decision-making, and the goal of our students and their learning and their growth, but recognizing the importance of every person that's a part of that process. When all of that comes together, that's when schools truly thrive. So I'm excited we get to pass this tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Pritchett.
Thanks for saying that, and kind of took the words right out of my mouth, right out of my mouth, and I just want to say that Sac City has some of the best darn administrators in the region.
Thank you. Any more comment from my colleagues? Erin Dunn. It's an action item.
I'll move it.
Thank you. Thank you. Roll call.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Kayata.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is it action or motion? Sorry. Lot on my brain tonight. This is a job. This is truly an effort. I know, I know. President Rhodes is probably at home going, "Whoa, Gracie, good job." All right, item 9.3, Approve a Resolution Number 3353, Recognition of National School Lunch Week. Eric De La Cruz. Your floor, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, everyone. I'm really excited to share with you. We're looking for the approval of Resolution Number 3353, the Recognition of National School Lunch Week. I'm an area supervisor. I work for the district and for the last five years. It's an honor to be recognizing that the importance of feeding our students and not only getting them quality food, but also giving them love and service, you know, at the point of service where our cafeteria workers every day, they make connections with our students. And I've seen a huge impact since I've started working here. I didn't realize how important it was. I do have students myself, I have kids, and they go to school, and they do comment on the style of food they have. But more importantly, they always tell me about how impactful the cafeteria employees are, even if the food isn't the best, they get really good service because people care. So we want to recognize National School Lunch Week, and there's some brief history. Let me just click over here. So, in 1946, the National School Lunch Act was enacted by Harry Truman, so that was a while ago. So he had a vision. He said, "Hey, we need some school lunch for our students. We need to make sure that their brains are fed, their bodies are fed, so that they can be in school and they could focus more." And also, again, there's a hospitality piece to it. There's a hospitality component to what we do. It's not always about food, it's about connection with students. And in 1966, the Child Nutrition Act, President Lyndon B. Johnson enacted, and then most recently, the 2021, the California Assembly Bill for Universal Meals, which is huge for everyone, I don't know how familiar you are with that, but universal meals for our students, especially in California, you know, to be able to go to school, get an education, but also know that that you don't have to worry about having that extra money in your pocket. Again, a meal is huge, especially for our district, a big portion of our district really counts on that. Next up here, so I kind of kept it short, but overall, I just want to read a couple notes I had on a couple things here. Let me just get those ready. So, whereas, so I guess we're gonna, this is where we kind of declare, whereas October 9th through the 13th, 2023, we would like to designate it as National School Lunch Week. Whereas a school lunch program is just one of several federal programs offered at SAC Unified School District, including the school breakfast program, the after-school snack program, the child and adult care food program, and the at-risk after-school supper programs. We have a lot of programs that we run here. Whereas today, Sacramento Unified School District's Nutrition Services Department, of over 400 employees across the district, have a goal of 40% of our meals made from scratch, with nearly 70% of our seasonal produce grown locally in California. And I want to emphasize that that is a goal. We live in Sacramento, where the most abundant fruits and vegetables, and our plan is, yes, we want to get there, we want 70%, I'm sorry, 40% of our meals made from scratch, and we need to handle that, we need people to fight for us to be able to get these products in there. And we have such a bounty of produce and vegetables, it's really a shame that we don't get more. Whereas school lunch programs offer a unique opportunity to establish early food literacy, which is important, habits with fresh fruits and vegetables that improve long-term health outcomes and preventable diet-related disease. Again, we eat healthy, we eat consistently, we feed our bodies nourishments, it's good for all of us, especially our students. Whereas school lunches not only look and taste great, but meet district federal nutrition standards with regards to whole grains, vegetables, and a wide variety of fats, sodium calories. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Public comment, sir?
There is none.
Thank you. First on the floor, we got Member Singh. Good, sir.
Thank you. Good, how are you? It's not a question, I'm just gonna provide some comment and context, because if I didn't, I would be leaving out a big portion of what's inspired me for a lot of the work that I do. So, there's a piece of history up there that I think we're not mentioning, and that is, and I'll just, I have something written, so I'll just say it. So, in 1966, Huey Newton and Bobby Seals created the Black Panther Party in Oakland, California. Community members turned to the Panthers because of social services and facing social problems like job discrimination, evictions, and one way that they determined to help the community was to start a food program. The Panthers started the free breakfast program because hunger and poverty made it difficult for black children to succeed in schools. In 1968, most poor children went to school hungry and stayed hungry. The National School Lunch Program provided reduced funding but not free food. In 1969, during a Senate hearing, the National School Lunch Program Administrator admitted that the Panthers fed more children than the entire state of California did through its funding. The Panthers Free Breakfast Program focused national attention on the urgent need to give poor children nutritious meals so they could be successful in school. In 1973, this attention helped lead Congress's dramatic increase in funding to schools, and that program, even though it was a limited scope around Oakland, helped pressure Congress to authorize the expansion of that program to all public schools in 1975. So I just want to give an ode to the Panthers and the work that they did to make sure that we can actually get this type of services for all our children in our schools.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that.
Thank you kindly, sir. I didn't wear my food shirt, I usually got my Panthers shirt on, but I didn't wear it tonight. Next up, Ms. Pritchett.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador. Our acting president. All right, well, really, you're not acting, you're doing the job. Well done. All right, so, where did our speaker go? You're not done yet.
Oh, I looked down for a second. Mr. De La Cruz. Mr. De La Cruz. Mr. De La Cruz! We are not done with you, sir. Oh, no.
The student had a question.
Oh, more importantly, yes, but...
Oh, yes, it's very important.
Sorry, we got a few more questions.
No problem, yeah.
So, I'm always excited when we do these resolutions, but I always think to myself, like, I always wish that, you know, it was like, you know, we were doing a resolution on school lunch year, right? And I always think of it as, food should really be, you know, the first lesson of academics, right? We teach academics, but food should be the first thing that our kids are learning, because like, it's a brain food, right? That they have to have this food to be able to learn, and oftentimes, if they don't have that food, they are not able to learn in the classrooms, right? And I think back to my childhood of living in poverty and thinking about, like, going to school and being hungry, and thinking about things that I ate, of like, going and grabbing a bag of chips because, you know, it was like a quarter, and that's what I could afford, right? Or grabbing something cheap because that's what I could afford. And I think, like, this is fantastic that we're able to offer these types of things to our students, right? And so, I so appreciate that we can do these types of things, and this healthy eating really matters. So I just want to say how much I appreciate the work that goes into these types of things. And so, I know there's so much more on my mind that I really want to say. Give me a second, let me put my thoughts in order here. It just, it makes me emotional when I think about these type of things, because I just really think back about how it used to be and where we're at now. And I just really, really appreciate, like, where we're at now. And I guess that's all I really want to say, because...
Thank you. There's a lot of work to be done, too.
There is a lot of work, and it just makes me, I guess that's really what I want to say, that's really what I want to say. It just, it really does make me emotional when I walk into a school and I see kids engaged. This is what I want to say, is when I walk in, sorry, when I walk into a school and I see, like, I see kids eating healthy, right? And then I see kids sitting at a table and learning manners at a table, and I see kids engaging at a table, and they don't, sometimes they don't learn that at home, right? Those are the kind of things that make me emotional. So, thank you.
No, thank you, and I want to say too, you know, food, I've been in hospitality and food service my whole life, went to culinary school, and I see the smiles that I put on customers' faces when I put out a nice dish and nice service. But when you're at school, I do see a huge difference in these kids, when they're engaged, it's a social aspect of sitting down and eating next to your neighbor. And, you know, speaking of manners, you know, there's many schools where the cafeteria is a challenging zone, where the principals are challenged, and, but it's an opportunity to be, to set some standard, you know, while they're going through the line. And I see, from the beginning, the first couple weeks of school, I'm sure you're all aware, could be pretty chaotic at times, but sooner or later, they get used to it, you see that they're starting to get used to going through the lines, they get to know their cafeteria lead, the aides, I mean, such a group effort to feed students, from the custodians to the principals, the aides, to the teachers, and over the course of the first couple weeks of school, we saw how challenging it is to get kids back. But sooner or later, they start building these habits, and yes, there are children who are eating more fruits and vegetables because they come to school, because of the salad bars and exposing to things that they may not like. We put jicama on our salad bar, and most kids don't know what jicama is, and most kids don't like jicama, but we're gonna show them what that is, right? Maybe you don't like jicama, some people don't like jicama, but we're gonna expose them to these new fruits and vegetables.
I didn't know what jicama was when I was a little kid.
And you know what? It's not that great, unless you give it a little spice, in my opinion, but we have kids now who love jicama sticks. We have kids who are seeing something beyond a baby carrot, and that's what we do in food service, we're trying to push the envelope. There are headwinds, as with anything, you know, the current economic environment we're in, whether it be labor, food costs, all those headwinds, but we're gonna pierce through, we're gonna do the best we can, and yes, we're asking for support and recognition for National School Lunch.
Yes, thank you, that was my point, and I apologize for getting emotional, but it's more than just a cafeteria, it's more than just, it's more than just food, it's the experience, so I just, I really wanted to just get that point across, so I appreciate you giving me the moment of just kind of gathering my thoughts, so thank you.
No problem, thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchett. Ms. Jean?
So, I wanted to just kind of raise up all of the amazing people that work in our food industry here, from those who are doing the 40% of our meals from scratch, but I really was captured by the word hospitality. You know, we sometimes forget, and I'm gonna use the antiquated term like our cafeteria ladies, which I know we don't use that term, right, the lunch ladies, but they're the aunties, the grandmas, the mama bears for our students, you know, safe space, and that is so, so important. And I also want to do, I mean, this is a national thing, but when the world fell apart through COVID, when things shut down, you know what didn't shut down? Was the school food. In fact, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services praised our schools and the incredible system they have. One, that we don't let anything go to waste, we maximize the limited resources that we're given, and two, that we have incredible people that made sure kids get fed, and that, you know, it's something that, it's an unsung hero thing, and we need to sing our heroes a little bit more. So thank you for all of our education support professionals who work in our food industry for the incredible work you do and the very ambitious goals you have.
I appreciate it, thank you so much. Hospitality is important, absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Villa.
Thank you for being here tonight. I have a few points. One, starting off, just beyond proud of the Sacramento City Unified School District Food Department, it's amazing, just see in that first paragraph, the amount of work that goes into those individual packaged meals to serve, the after-school program, breakfast, lunch, that is no small feat. I've seen it at Central Kitchen, but seeing it roll out in the schools and how it's so put together and organized, I can't even imagine, you know, the work that goes into that, and again, especially during COVID, the millions of meals of, you know, our students that were fed and families that were fed, no questions asked. That was something that we could never forget how impactful that was for our community. I also want to say, I know that we have some of the hardest workers, and, you know, we talked about examples in these grandmas and aunties, but my daughter goes through the lunch line, I tell you, she has to get to school at 7:15, 7:30, because she wants to go to breakfast, to hang out with her friends, and eat the breakfast. But she always tells me, which I think is the cutest thing, she's like, she knows my name, she asks about my day. And I'm like, "Yeah, that's great, you go there every day, I love that." And she goes, "No, Mom, she asked about my weekend, and she asked..." This is like her friend, she has this correspondence with her almost every day, and she tells me this, she's like, "Yeah, she told me that her weekend was fun, and she hung out with her grandchild," and like, that's a relationship with this woman, and it's pretty special to me. So, I love that she asks about the children's feelings, they talk together, it's just, it's a different dynamic that we don't, again, celebrate what that does for a student every day throughout our district. So please relay our heartfelt gratitude for everyone in the team, and if they ever say that they see a woman, I always clap and wave to them when they're driving down the street on 65th. I am a creeper, and I always wave out my window, they don't know who I am, but I do it. So, that's me. So if you ever say, "If you see someone clapping out at their window, it's me." So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Kayata?
So, a lot of what I wanted to say is already been said, keep it short. I think it's easy to forget, and, you know, as a student, as a family who just goes to one school, what a Herculean task it is to get this food to all of our students, multiple meals a day, you have breakfast, lunch, supper, dinner for your after-school kids, that's a lot of meals, and a lot of our meals are coming in fresh every day, prepared for the students, and delivered to all the students. This is a lot of effort and the pride that our team takes in getting great meals to our kids, given the limited resources we have to do so. We don't have a lot of money to make these meals, and we're able to turn that couple dollars into great food, nourishment, but also tasty. My daughter will sometimes want to look at the menu that we have on the fridge and say, "You know what, today, I don't want to eat in home, let me get me to school early, let's get that breakfast," right? The supper they're having in ACES, they love it. And also, you know, just to the previous comments that were made about the impact that all these nutrition workers have on our kids, you know, this is an adult in their life, who's part of their life. We went to one of the Wadupon Walls Community Fairs, and my daughter saw the cafeteria woman, she ran over to her, you know, it's just like a teacher to them, and we value them, and please believe, when we talk about, you know, negotiating with our labor partners who include these workers and other lower-paid workers on our school sites, we take this into consideration. These are really, really appreciate the work that's done for our students and our community.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I guess I'll be the last to speak. Food is love, and if you really think about it, how much does someone who makes under $18 an hour love your child to feed them what they eat every day? I appreciate this, although I know you guys are never gonna bring that big cheese pizza back made in the kitchen cafeteria. I'm old, but I remember the food was home. It wasn't so different that I could sit down with my friends and, you know, get in trouble in the cafeteria, but still manage to eat and not go home hungry and not be asleep in class. So, you know, we, and I mirror what my colleague, Mr. Kayata, says, is that definitely take it into consideration the love that is put into these folks. It's not only hospitality, these are their children.
Yeah.
And you feed them, when you cut a carrot, and you cut it with love, that goes into your kid. So, I completely and absolutely appreciate that. So, with that said, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
And we are moving this action item.
All right.
And seconded. Roll call. Member Villa.
Hi. I'm expecting that.
Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Is a scrumptious aye.
Member Kayata.
Aye.
And Member Jean.
Aye.
That is passed. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you for your time and your hospitality as well, appreciate it.
Thank you. You could go, because I don't know, we made him come back up here. Next on the agenda... What are we on? Item number 9.4, approving Resolution Number 3348, adopting carbon-neutral goals and guidelines for Sacramento City Unified School District buildings. Welcome, Ms. Seegrest and Mr. Browning. Floor is yours.
Hello. Good evening, School Board and Superintendent Allen. Last board meeting, I presented on our carbon-neutral goals and guidelines, which you again have in your packet. Today, I'm here to seek official approval of them through a board resolution, which you also have in your packet with some recent edits. We have provided these revisions and track changes, which I believe you have as well. We also have these revisions available for the public in the back of the room, and I will go over the specific changes in more detail in just a moment. Approval will solidify these goals and guidelines into our design standards and specifications, which will ensure they are being followed by our design and maintenance teams. This is a watershed moment for the district. We will be joining a small but growing movement of school districts across the country that have not only acknowledged that climate change is a serious threat to humans, but have also created actionable goals and guidelines to decarbonize our buildings and adapt to a changing climate. We know that there has been a lot of community interest around accelerating our decarbonization timeline to 2030 or 2035. I first want to acknowledge and commend our community members for their passion and engagement in this area. Please find proposed provisions to the resolution that were placed in front of you. Under the portfolio-level goals towards the bottom, so I'm gonna go over a few of the specific revisions, towards the bottom of Page 2, you will see we changed the wording to say, "Achieve carbon neutrality by at least 2045 as a starting point." Also, on Page 3, under the first and second, be it further resolved, we ask for one year to conduct a financial assessment and electrification feasibility study to best understand the true costs and actions required to accelerate our timeline, which we will present to the Board upon its completion. Also, at the bottom of Page 3, we have included another, further be it resolved, acknowledging we will continue to look for partnerships and opportunities to help us achieve carbon neutrality earlier than 2045, which we will present annually to the Board. We agree that achieving carbon neutrality earlier than 2045 is both desirable and important, but we need to understand what we have first. Last year, almost 50% of our energy use was from natural gas assets, so that's a lot of air-handling units, boilers, and kitchens to transform. We also have newer natural gas assets that won't be near their end-of-life for 25 years or more. So again, we are asking for this financial assessment and electrification study to provide us with a roadmap on exactly what we need to do to become carbon-neutral. a roadmap on exactly what we need to do to become carbon neutral, down to each natural gas asset, and how much it will cost to do it, whether that date is 2045, 2035, or 2030. I strongly encourage you to pass the revised resolution before you tonight. It will mean these goals and guidelines will go into effect sooner, and the mitigation of climate change impacts is not only dependent on the date you achieve decarbonization, but also when you begin the process. Thank you for your time and engagement tonight. It is most appreciated.
Thank you so much. We have public comments, sir?
We have six.
Okay. So we'll start calling folks up. You've got two minutes.
First speaker, Rosie Yakub, followed by Juliet Allianz and Mo Cashmary.
Good evening.
Hi. Thanks for taking the time to listen up. My name's Rosie Yakub. I am a volunteer for 350 Sacramento and a parent, and a parent of a C.K. McClatchy student. I was really excited to hear the changes that they have proposed on the resolution here. I also want to point out some items that, you know, there is an aphorism that says, if you're in a hole you don't like, stop digging. So one of the things I want to encourage, get, you know, put out here is that the district needs to stop installing gas equipment, HVAC and boilers as part of this process. Also, they, this, the resolution as it stood, said that there would, all new sites would be electric and photovoltaic ready. I also, I strongly encourage the district to move forward with actually putting in photovoltaics. The Chula Vista School District did that using general obligation bond funds. And because the solar reduced their energy costs so much, they will, they'll actually have saved millions of dollars by the time the bond is paid, is paid off. So there are gains to be made. In the city of Sacramento, the city actually did a study showing that because of the difference in price in electric versus gas and because of our climate, for houses, it's actually 90%, 98% of the homes could save money on their utilities by electrifying. So when we do these cost comparisons, we need to be talking about things like what it means to leave something, to take a gas boiler out that is still working to achieve 2045. Don't put it in because they last 20 years, right? And also, we need to be taught, thinking about the costs of energy overall, not just the appliance when we're, when we're estimating what we need to do. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker. Mr. Cashmary.
Hey, everybody. This is Bo Cashmary. Thank you for taking the time to listen to this item. Again, the reason I'm here is because when my, I moved here before the pandemic, and I know most of you heard my story where my son had to decide whether he was going to continue going to a dual immersion school, which was further away, or go to the neighborhood school, which had no dual immersion. He chose the one that was close to us, partially because he told me he didn't want to die of climate change. And I told him, and that isn't really going to happen. You're okay. Everything's all right. But secretly, you know, but, you know, it kind of shook me. And I started doing some research and I realized, oh, shit, things are worse than I thought they were. And so it kind of scared me. And so I know there's been 100 letters sent. We appreciate the changes that have been made to the proposal, although I'd still ask the district to get language to strengthen it further. And we really want to make sure that the district is looking at their transportation as well. We have, you know, we want to, that's a huge contributor to climate change that isn't addressed currently in the proposal, or I may have missed it if it got amended into it. But, you know, Councilmember Katie Valenzuela is in support. Councilmember Myveng is in support. We even got the Chair of the SMUD to write a letter as well. We have a chance to kind of be on the right side of things. Because if we don't deal with this, it means more floods, more hurricanes, more climate chaos, more pandemics. And I understand that we really need to focus on equity as a district. Historically, we have not done enough around equity, no doubt. And I'd also argue that, you know, we can't just achieve equity. We also need to make sure that our students have a livable future, right? Because if we're just letting them driving into, off a cliff into an apocalypse, then, you know, it doesn't matter. So we have, that's a fundamental duty and we have to be able to do both. And even if it means we need to look at doing something like a green bond, I think we should be looking at all those options and really studying what we can make happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cashmary. Next speaker, please.
Sophia Walters, followed by Siri Alturi. Sophia Walters. Siri Alturi.
Good evening. Good evening. Sorry I was late. Hello, everyone. My name is Juliette and I'm a senior in high school at C.K. McClatchy. I'm speaking before you today because I want to convey a sense of urgency. Though I applaud the district's sustainability team for their hard work in creating this resolution and for their dedication to green energy, I want to stress that 2045 is not soon enough. Yes, 2045 may feel like a more realistic deadline, but it will only delay the efforts that need to start immediately. Choosing a deadline closer to 2030 might feel ambitious, but ambition is exactly what we need in this time of crisis. Even if we do not make it, it will still spur a movement of action. I wholeheartedly understand that as school board members, you have many priorities. And I'm sure your overarching goal is to support the academic, emotional and physical needs of your students. Though speeding up the, speeding up the carbon neutrality process might feel unnecessary in this current moment, as climate change still feels very far away to many, I cannot emphasize enough the direness of this moment. If your goals are indeed to support the academic, emotional and physical needs of your students, addressing climate change should be your top priority. It is estimated that the planet's average temperature can increase by 1.5 degrees as early as 2033, which is clearly far before 2045. We would start seeing more wildfires, stronger hurricanes, food and water scarcity, and even more pandemics, which clearly impact the health and well-being of students all over the globe. But how would our school district help to lower this global temperature? Though a school district's impact might seem minuscule in the grand scheme of things, data shows that K-12 schools emit an estimated 72 million metric tons of carbon dioxide, equivalent to the output of 18 coal plants, more than 8 million homes. Even more importantly, though, is the fact that schools are supposed to be sanctuaries of education and awareness. They should be some of the first entities to spearhead the process towards carbon neutrality, setting the example to their students that they care about their future. I think this is 100% a conversation that needs to be continued after today. And we are already building a movement of people power to ensure that it does. Over 100 people, including teachers, students and parents, have already expressed in a petition how important it is to be ambitious. So please listen to the people and let's keep this discussion going.
Thank you.
Ariyan McCullough. Ariyan McCullough.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Hello to educators, school board members and people of the community. My name is Ariyan McCullough and I am a senior at C.K. McClatchy. And I stand before you today, not only as a member of this community, but also as a steward of our planet's future. Our schools, the very institutions responsible for nurturing the next generation, must take a lead role in addressing one of the most pressing issues of our time, climate change. I urge you to consider advancing our target date for making Sacramento City schools carbon neutral from 2045 to 2030, which may seem impossible, I mean implausible. Climate change is not a distant threat. It's an immediate crisis. Wildfires, floods, hurricanes, we're living in this chaos and it's us who will pay the price if you don't act. Expediting our goal to achieve carbon neutrality by 2030 isn't just a target on paper. It's a lifeline for Sacramento's Black students and minority communities. Our communities are no strangers to the harsh impacts of climate change and environmental struggles. Our Black and minority neighborhoods are hit harder than the white privileged ones. We're the ones breathing the dirty air while simultaneously lacking the proper healthcare. You see, those who are, those who have less are the ones who suffer the most in calamity strikes, be it heat waves or floods. If we're serious about tackling climate change, then we've got to uplift the vulnerable. That means green spaces, flood protection and sustainable buildings in our communities, and that's starting with our schools. So when we talk about climate action, it's not, it's not just saving the planet, it's saving lives and the society, and the, saving the lives that society often intentionally under resorts. By decreasing carbon emissions, we're not just reducing numbers, we're taking a stand for health equity. But it doesn't stop there. It's also about economic empowerment. It's about telling our communities that there are doors opening to the green energy sectors, doors that can slam shut of, shut in economics disparities. We're building resilience, not just infrastructure. It's investing in cooling centers, flood protection and sustainable solutions to ensure our neighborhoods stand tall in the face of adversity. As a Black student and citizen of Sacramento, I'm here standing, I'm here standing, taking control of my future. Enough small steps and eventually we'll start running. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sophia Walters.
Sophia and Siri are on her, on their way. If it's possible to let them speak later, that'd be great. But obviously, it's up to the chair.
Those are our final two cards.
Y'all want to have a discussion and have them speak? You guys feel like maybe we could have a discussion and then have them speak when they get here? If we're still having a discussion, obviously. Okay. So if we are, Mr. Cashmary, you might want to get on the horn and call your students and tell them to hustle. But what's, okay, okay. But don't drive too fast because safety first, right? Okay. So I am ready to hear from my colleagues on this. Mr. Singh, you have the floor.
I did not know I'm first. Okay. I do have a couple of, I guess we can, I guess I can ask some of the questions that were asked. I might as well ask them. But I'll start by saying thank you to everyone for commenting. We absolutely, we all receive the emails. So we appreciate the emails and we understand that there, I'm not going to sit here and say climate change is not real because climate change is real. And we are all suffering collectively. But at the same time, I think I'll just mention something before I add a question into this, is that if we're going to talk about the changes and the disparities, I would just mention that I'm also looking to the folks who are signing on from our city leadership, county leadership and state leadership, that a lot of this power is in your hands, too. We as schools absolutely want to make changes, but historically, redlining and redistricting and other issues is what has led to us creating expressways through Black and Brown communities, us disenfranchising Black and Brown communities so that they don't have green spaces. So as much as we want to step in and fix some of those issues, I also look to the city and county folks who are kind of joining this fight to take that lead as well, so we can actually step up in collaboration. So on that, I think it would be great if y'all could address some of the questions, which included, what is the process around installing new equipment, considering it may need to be replaced anyways if it's more green in the future? And then also, specific to the electrification piece, I know that there have been grants and other things for bus electrification. I can't find anything on our website that talks about bus electrification, but I can around other neighboring districts. So I'd like to know a bit more about that, too.
Great questions. So I would first also like to thank the amazing McClatchy students and Sacramento 350 for speaking. And to answer your question, so I'll start with the bus one because that one is, is pretty, pretty easy to answer. So we are working to electrify our bus fleet. And I did just, we did just rewrite the sustainability portion of our website. And we did include a small piece on bus transportation. We're going to continue, I mean, it was an initial first draft. We're going to continue to add to it, add photos and add additional elements. But we certainly plan to electrify our bus. And I am working, we applied for the most recent EPA grant. We are working with our local air quality district to get the nine buses, which will hopefully be in service by the, by winter. So that'll be an additional nine new buses. And then we're also working potentially with Cal Start around our, our routes. So looking at how we're actually, right now, our routes are mostly based off of historical busing, but we're looking at how we can use a fully electric bus fleet and bus our students. And that'll need route planning. So we're working with another organization around that as well. But we hope, I hope that we are fully electric soon because I agree, not only do diesel buses cause climate change, but also our students are getting onto those buses and breathing the fumes. So I am 100% behind it. And I hear you on the website and we can definitely update that portion. So the other question, I need a little clarification. So you said, what is the process around installing new equipment? Do you mean before it goes towards its end of life?
So I think one of the speakers talked about Chris is coming up. Is that a good thing?
Always.
I think the question that the speaker had asked was more around.
What are we doing now?
Exactly. And if we're installing equipment that will be out of, yeah.
With Chamberlain's leadership, we have several Measure H projects. So our new three schools that are currently in construction all will have solar. They will all have electric only, no natural gas on site. We are also taking our smaller modernization projects currently in design as Alice Bernie and Matsuyama, but we have seven schools that are going to go through this in the next two years. The next two would be Hollywood Park and Ethel Phillips. And they all are receiving electrification inside their kitchens and removing natural gas as part of that. So we're finding out that the costs we, maybe originally we're thinking this could be hard, is ending up not being so hard. So we're going to go ahead and just make that a high priority as a tier one scope in, in all of our EZ projects of those campus renewal styles. So we're hopeful that by the end of the summer, two schools will be great starting points. And then we're just going to keep going with the electrification in the kitchens as part of all of our projects that are inside of those scopes.
Perfect. I have a follow-up, though. Is there a equity lens to this piece around the schools that we're choosing to prioritize?
So we do use the equity index inside of the facilities master plan to scope these projects. There's, with Nathaniel really helping, making sure that that is a continuous focus, we still use the business side of school construction, where we have state reimbursement that brings in matching funds for some of these projects. So while we're starting, the age of our facilities, we start in the West because 25-year-old facilities like a Matsuyama is becoming eligible. We receive about $4 million in matching fund, which is allowing us to take a couple extra steps. And as we move east through the project, we should end in the next couple of years on the Rosemont side, who will be coming, their 25-year matching fund eligibility. And that will allow us to just continue to grow those abilities because we'll be bringing in money through the state. So using some business practices with our sustainability and with our equity lens through that. The campus renewals, we're using the equity lens along with the facility conditions. So you'll see us go like Hollywood Park and Ethel Phillips being our next set, are in, are high on those equity indexes. And then I think you'll see later in our bond, like JFK being a ready parking lot for solar. It's done, but we're already trying to get that going with the phase two of installing solar and then looking at our EZ properties that have space. And Chamberlain works with SMUD on a regular basis to find some level of grants and equal opportunity to maybe put some of these structures in place and start that electrification.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Next up, Mr. Kayata.
All right. So once again, thank you to staff, all three of you. And I'm sure there is many more behind this. Really appreciate the work. I spoke kind of extensively and ramblingly on this last time, so I won't go through that again. Suffice it just to quickly say, it's very important to me that we recognize the impact climate change has on our students who are in school today. They are the ones who are experiencing climate change now and they are the ones who, if we don't take care of the planet for them, will be in a terrible situation when they're adults. I also wanted to thank you for the amendments made to the originally proposed resolution. Now I am going to move two additional edits. One of them, you took my edit already, so you took that out of me. The gist of my edit is essentially to recognize the balance of what we can do as a school district. We want to do as much as we can to be carbon neutral as soon as possible, as well as all the other efforts we're taking in construction, modernization and our equity index. But we don't want to overcommit ourselves and be in a position where we've committed to a date that means that we're going to have to chip away at education funding, you know, for our bread and butter of a school district. I believe Member Singh said it. Ultimately, this is a state and regional issue to address more than ours. We need money if we're going to do it. And in the meantime, we're going to do what we can within the confines we have. So 2045, to me, is an absolute last resort, but we're going to try to do better. So the one revision that already is here essentially says, the board is going to hear an update on this every year with actionable plans and actively looking for opportunities. on this every year with actionable plans and actively looking for opportunities to move that date forward. And I believe that that's appropriate. As we've even been learning about climate change and how to respond to it over the past 10 years, technologies that we thought were, you know, years away are now here. It's moving fast and we're going to stay active. We're not just committing to a date. Once, we're going to be constantly revising. And if we can move it up, we're going to move it up, or future boards will. And so to that end, the first change I would like to make is to, and to my fellow board members, I passed out my revisions, which don't have my name on them. I didn't know that we were going to have other revisions. So sorry for the confusion. It's like a one-page. That one was mine. And I'll still read them for everyone else who doesn't have this. So, and this is my motion. Okay. So the first one is on the bottom of page three of the printed version that we all have. Be it resolved that SEUSD staff will report annually to the Board of Education. And the only thing I would add to that would be a parenthetical, as an appearance item at a regular board meeting. I think that probably would be what would happen anyway. I just want to make sure that we're committing to that because we're asking to do that essentially every year until 2045. I don't want that to get lost and for it to turn into a board communication or to turn into just a report that gets filed in consent. The other item I would add would be a paragraph, which would be the last paragraph before passed and adopted. And it will say, be it further resolved that the Sacramento City School District Board directs staff to limit the purchase or repair where the cost of the repair exceeds 50% of the current value of the equipment, of carbon emitting equipment such as vehicles, heating or cooling elements, and maintenance tools when possible. I believe this provides staff with flexibility when it's needed, but it sets a clear direction that, something that's bothered me actually since we acted on April 13th to pay $1.6 million to buy six diesel buses. I spoke with Superintendent. I'm sure you all communicated with them on that. There are times when we need to do things because we need a bus now. But having this in writing will say to staff, hey, don't do it if you don't have to. Whenever possible, buy something that's better or fix something that's better. So that is my motion. Sorry, I rambled again.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know if we actually finished the discussion, but.
Well, we can keep talking after.
Okay.
I just wanted to put it out there.
Okay. And, and your modifications are always so beautiful.
I tried to print them to make it easier, but then we have two now.
Yes. But I appreciate your, your ramble because I think it stalled us so we could get another speaker up. Who is here?
Siri Alturi.
Hi Siri. Floor George, you've got two minutes.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Siri Alturi, and I'm a youth intern and advisory board member for 350 Sacramento. I'm also a current high school senior. The first thing I'd like to say is that while working with Mr. Browning and Ms. Segres directly for the past few months on the issues of introducing sustainable energy and establishing carbon neutral goals and landmarks, it's come to my attention that there are currently no concrete goals addressing these measures approved for 2030, 2035, or even 2045 for Sacramento School District. That to me is very concerning. Just over a week ago, youth interns at 350 Sacramento created a petition calling for SEUSD to approve sustainability goals for 2030 and 2035. And we've already gotten over 100 signatures, meaning that the pressure and community, community concern is there. On a more personal note, this issue is one that concerns our future. Many of you have children of your own. It's hard to see the effects of rapid climate change firsthand and not fight for this issue. When kids can't have recess because of extreme heat days or develop asthma because of air pollution in their communities, they begin to wonder what those effects will turn into in their adulthood. I understand that there is a lot that goes into these decisions, specifically in terms of funding allocation. It can be hard to make this decision to set goals quickly because the question is always in the back of your mind. What if we, what if we don't meet them? We understand that concern, but it's absolutely imperative that we adopt concrete carbon neutral goals and guidelines to meet, especially by 2030 and 2035. It's a form of accountability that tells students that you prioritize our health and safety and you're listening to our concerns and that you really are trying your best to address them, not just saying that you will. Students themselves are doing their part. High school students are urging officials in Sacramento to meet these goals by 2030 and 2035. And we're communicating the why and the what and the how. We're putting in the effort, but we shouldn't be doing it alone. We need your help. So I hope that instead of asking what if these goals are too ambitious, you can instead recognize that. The most important question in this scenario is, what would happen to our students if we fail to be? Thank you.
Thank you. Did I have any more mentions, any more topics y'all want to talk about, my colleagues, before I speak? Here and none. I can ask a layman's question because I know not a whole lot about this. Are there any, is there any conflict like between the power companies and solar related to like S M U D versus P G E and E? Are we paying them more? Or like, I'm, I'm hearing some really interesting questions coming up.
That is a great question, and I will do my best to answer. And I don't know if other folks want to step in as well. So we work with S M U D a lot, and they provide us with our electricity. And you're saying that if we were to start taking our natural gas offline, P G E, there might be conflicts there, right? Because suddenly S M U D would be getting a lot of money. That's a great question. And I don't, I don't necessarily have an answer to that. I imagine that these natural gas companies should be reading the writing on the wall and hopefully thinking about how they too can adapt and start to actually mitigate climate change as well. And so maybe they will choose, turn into electric companies, and then we can possibly deal with that then. But I don't, does anyone, do you have anything to add?
I think that if you think about it, S M U D sells electricity, not natural gas. So it's in their best interest as well to help us electrify. And so wanting to have more share of the market from us, they're incentivized to provide us with incentives to get there.
Okay. And that will obviously be a part of, you know, the reviews that you're doing and the research you're doing. And somebody will, will speak English into that because I obviously don't get most of it, but it makes sense that we'll be hearing reports about, you know, what's happening. I, I do want to say, like, I appreciate, even though I understand like 25% of it, I still love the passion. I, I love exactly what we're hearing from this. And not directly to you, you, you guys, but, you know, to our community. When there's an issue and it is pressing and it is important, like student outcomes, I, I want to see letter writing campaigns for that, too. You know, we, we had to switch this up. I got a lot of emails and they were, they were wonderfully prepared. They made sense. But, you know, Member Singh talked about equity and how important that is. And the, the improving of the world for those who don't matter is a world that I don't want. And I, I really feel like next writing campaign, I think Mo is still sitting out there. Next time we do something like that, next time it becomes a big event that we get emails, I want as much of a push as we've gotten today regarding our, our 2045 goal. So it's, it's always just my heart that I have to say it that way. So improving the planet has to be for everyone, not just making it look good for those who have asked. There are many who do not ask, who may not even understand. So one question is these, this upward mobility that we have toward electrification and modernization and moving into carbon neutral. And this probably heads over to poor Ms. Wright, but are there education types of programs that we're going to have that's going to explain to our children, yeah, big boiler is gone, but guess what? Like, is there something tied to that?
Yeah. Great question. So I work a lot with our curriculum and instruction team. And so we discuss climate change adaptation and mitigation lessons all the time and how to get it out to all of our students, regardless of what school they go to. So we do partner with EcoRise. They're an organization that has both sustainability and environmental justice curriculum that is easily accessible for students. But they also provide many grants to students so that they can have action-based items at their school. So I think that that's kind of a cool incentive, incentive for students to learn, but see their learning in action. And in my former life, back in Boston, I worked at a, in, at a school, I was school-based at a middle and high school. And I started a career and technical education program there for environmental science. And this is in the Boston Public Schools. And it was looking at students who are not normally part of the green revolution and helping to get students prepared for these green jobs, which are becoming more and more prevalent and also are well-paid and do not always require extensive, extensive education, which can be a barrier because as we know, education post-high school costs a lot of money. So yes, I am very interested in curriculum. I am very interested in how our students can not only experience clean schools and experience clean air, but they can also learn about why we're doing this and grow both their, both their, you know, knowledge skills, their social emotional skills, all of that. I think I, I'm very passionate about it. So yes, I am behind it and I will definitely push that along.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing those updates, too. Okay. So that's an action item. I thank you for your time. And no one else has anything else to say? So we will take a motion? What? Sorry.
This being moved as amended?
Oh, wait, we're back to Mr. Kayata. Oh, did you? I'm sorry. One moment, please. Mr. Singh has something to say. Go ahead, sir.
I saw Nathaniel walk up and grab this. So I don't know if you had this. Could you provide your thoughts real quick on this? I didn't agree. I just want to hear what your thoughts are.
Yeah, he does. That's why, because he hasn't had it before.
Yeah, thank you. I think that, that the first two items that Member Kayata is providing make perfect sense. The, the last one also makes sense and it kind of reflects some of the language we already have in the goals and guidelines. And so calling it out, I think works well. Also, I just think for the record that it's important to state that there are going to be instances where, for example, at McClatchy High School, we have a boiler that's from 1918 or 1908 or something like that. And so when that does go down, it's going to be easy to spend more than 50% of the cost of that boiler to get it up and running because it's going to be a much larger modernization project to retrofit that whole entire building for something newer than the current boiler in place. And so I think that, that this provides us as staff direction and, and the intent, knowing that we need to move forward with replacing gas-powered units with electric, mechanical units at, at whenever possible. And, and there are going to be occasions where that's not necessarily possible, but we'll start adding that to the list of, of a high priority for a larger project.
I had no idea. So that's really helpful.
So hearing that, it sounds like we need to take a vote on the amendment that was, okay. So that might be up to Mr. Kayata. So take a motion as amended. Did I press the button?
Yeah, I'll move it as amended. And I just wanted to clarify what you said, Nathaniel. So I said when possible because, okay, I just want to make sure everyone else got that. We're using the same words.
He just made a motion.
I moved for the version that I said, my version.
So I'm gonna look over at legal counsel. So Taylor wanted to make a change. Now we need to see if we are comfortable with his change and whether we agree that we want to move it as amended.
I will move on his amendment.
duly noted. And I will second that. And now we need to take a vote.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Kayata.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Singh.
Aye. I'll say it again. Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
So this moves as amended. I mean, it passes as amended.
That's right. The resolution as amended has been approved by the board.
What she said, because it's very technical to say all of that. So it, say it again, Ms. Collins.
The resolution as amended has been approved by the board.
Resolution as amended has been approved by the board.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on. Item 10.1, Bond Oversight Committee Measures Q and R. This is an informational topic.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Allen, this is our Bond Oversight Committee Measures Q and R Annual Report for 2223, and will be presented by Marsha Fritz, who's one of our CBOC members.
Hi. I've been on the board since 2021, which was right in the middle of COVID. And last year I was traveling. So this is the first time I've actually been to a meeting. But it's good to be here. Let's see, where's, you got it. Okay. So this is the Bond Oversight Committee, Building Equity Into the Foundation. The CSUSD core value is we recognize that our system is inequitable by design, and we vigilantly work to confront and interrupt inequities that exist to level the playing field and provide opportunities for everyone to learn, grow, and reach their greatness. One of the side things that I did actually was participate in your master plan. And that was a big thing for me, was to make sure that the master plan was going to be equitable. And I was really pleased at the response that I got from staff on making sure that, that it was equitable. The, the CSUSD's guiding principle is that all students are given an equal opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest array of options. So given that, we go into the bond itself. So Prop 39, we're required to have bond oversight committees by law. And Prop 39 requires that we conduct an annual independent performance audit to ensure that the funds have been expended only for the specific projects listed, and to conduct an annual independent financial audit of the proceeds from the sale of bonds until all of those proceeds have been expended for the school facilities. Now, these two bond measures are, are, are funding down. We just got Measure H. These are, we're spending them, which is great. And my, my term goes through 2025, and my hope is that we will spend it all the way down by the time I, I'm the last woman standing. The membership, we're supposed to have seven, but because we're almost done with our, our bond expenditures, we're down to three people, which is fine. We've got Brian Hill, he's our chair. We've got Terrence Gladney, who is back there. Terrence is back there. And then me, I'm Marsha Fritz. And I represent the Taxpayers Association. The support staff has been fantastic. We've got Jesse Castillo, our Assistant Superintendent, Chris Ralston, our Director Three of Facilities Management. We've got Cindy Tao, the Director of Accounting Services, Nathaniel Browning, who you know has been fantastic, Crystal Hoff, our Accounting Specialist, and Elena Hankardt, our Administrative Assistant. She's the one that makes us all aware of when our meetings are and where we have to be. So our annual activities, this was the first year because of COVID that we were actually able to meet in person and actually go to places. We've had, we had our August 3 meeting was in the central kitchen. When I first started, it was right in the middle of the central kitchen being completed. And what a great timing for you with COVID to have that central kitchen ready to go with all of these meals preparation, you know, with the national school recognition, with the school lunch program recognition today is fantastic. November 2, we went to John Kennedy High School. February 1, we came here to the CERNIS Center. May 3, we went to the Hiram Johnson High School. And then in August, we saw the swimming pool. Where, where did we see, that's Burbank? Yeah, we saw the swimming pool at Burbank. Burbank, yeah, we saw the swimming pool at Burbank, the one in August. We also reviewed the reports by the, by your accounting department. We do that every... I'm a retired CPA, so this part is really easy for me. And we reviewed the audit reports prepared by Crowe. And now for the major projects. I'm going to talk about just this one, this one group of slides because this really excited me to see the Luther Burbank swimming pool. My son was in the swimming program. He's a swimmer, so this really excited me that they got the pool reconstructed in the locker room. And you know, your staff is so incredible. You know, they have this, they have, okay, fix the locker room and fix the pool, but what I see is the extra effort they go to make it special. For example, the artwork work in the locker room, things like that, the extra touches that don't cost a lot of extra money. It's all within the budget, but they just go the extra distance. They really think on the side of the students, how the students are going to react. And that football field at Hiram Johnson was amazing. Now, that was mostly completed, but the lighting, the fact that the lights don't show out on the streets and all your houses that are right close to the football field, don't have the lighting in their backyard, that was amazing. And they had a lot of extra special things that they put in because they think about it and they get it done. I was just very impressed with that. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris or to...
I think you did great. The $20 was well spent.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Just providing overview, the bond meeting for today, report is for the fiscal year that we just completed, June 30. So these projects completed in that process. You guys are familiar with the Burbank Pool. It was an $8 million project, repairing and refinishing a pool that had been closed for several years and making ADA accessibility upgrades to the locker room. Hiram Johnson provided lighting and a 1,600-person stadium with ticketed and concession stand space. That project came in also about $6.5 million.
Well, there's this, too. The Elder Creek Hand Court Irrigation, a lot of these are kind of, like, we're coming down to the end of the spending, so these are kind of smaller projects, but do you want to say something about these? All of them?
Sure, I'll review. Our board members are usually very update on what we're trying to do. The Elder Creek was supposed to be an irrigation, but we got some extra funding because as we're wrapping up, as other projects were completed or projects moved to Measure H, allowing us to provide some new amenities to our elementary schools. And you can see that all-weather track is not a common thing for an elementary school, but it provides all-weather opportunities for elementary students to have physical exercise outside. The Albert Einstein Gym Floor was a replacement due to a flood. We are wrapping that, that is wrapped up, and we are in the process of planning Albert Einstein Core, which is a finished, one of the last projects specifically called out in the bond language, which will replace the bleachers inside of that gym.
And then the parking lot, we saw the parking lot when we had the meeting there. And I don't know, is that where you're doing the solar-ready parking lot? It's amazing. And then the Rosemont High School turf replacement.
One of the items, well, so, yes, the, our first solar project that is not in our new schools, we're trying to put together, is at the John F. Kennedy. The parking lot, and with Q funding coming in, we needed to get the parking lot down and in place a little faster than we were ready to put in solar. Solar is an 18-month lead item for the product, so that, that's why we had to kind of split it apart. And the Rosemont High School turf, one of the things the bond program over the last 10 years has done is put artificial turf in our high schools. It's a great amenity, all-weather capabilities, but they have a short lifespan and they're not very well-suited in the routine restricted maintenance account. A cost of about $1 million to replace a turf is not funded by maintenance. So the bond is using that. We did accessibility upgrades and we can replace, that one is our first one, and JFK will also be next in line.
And then the security fencing, I know you had quite a few questions about the security fencing last year. That's being, that's continuing. And then the LED lighting exterior, energy efficient, which is great. Anything?
Well, I just want to piggyback off our last presentation by Chamberlain and Nathaniel is, the LED lighting is something we wrapped up last fiscal year, and it will be, it was across 25 site. Exterior lighting is one of our highest low-hanging fruits. I don't know if, I guess that's an oxymoron, right? You can't, highest low-hanging fruit. But it provides great energy reduction capabilities, reducing operating costs on our utility bill. And we've just recently, with Chamberlain leadership, been able to negotiate a better rebate for our future lighting projects. You'll see our next lighting project come to the board in November, and it will be a sizable rebate for the next 25, 26 schools that will be doing. Something unique and only offered to SAC City Unified through SMUD.
Great. So overall, we had, we oversaw and looked at, you know, looked at these reports every meeting, but $43 million was expended last year, which is amazing because they got their COVID money, too, over and above that. And what's really great is to spend the money wisely, quickly, and get these projects done efficiently. They were saving money every time we turned around when we'd ask questions, saying, well, we did it this way because we saved that. And a lot of good oversight on the contractors that they mentioned to us. So go to the, so we had an audit report without exception, no, nothing wrong, and that you can see on the website. And so both the Q and R audit reports were without exception. And me being a CPA, that was very, I could really drill the auditor to make sure they did the job that I wanted, that we wanted, so. Okay, so that's our report.
Thank you. Do you have any public comments on this?
There is none.
And from my colleagues. I hear Ms. Pritchett, you have the floor?
Thank you. Sorry, the mic would help, I guess. Thank you so much, and thank you for that report. If I remember right, this Q and R was passed the same year that I was elected in 2012, correct? And so I'm ecstatic to see, this is such a small snapshot of all of the work that's been done over the years. And so, and I just love seeing all the pictures over the years of all the work and going to the sites and seeing all of, you know, all the improvements that have been done and knowing that, you know, it's great seeing these huge projects, but there's always been all of these little tiny projects and things that we don't see, you know. But I have to say that, you know, one of the things that I'm really proud of is the work that's been done at Hiram Johnson. And I drive by there often, and every time I see it, my heart just warms. I still remember the day that those students filled the boardroom. And they were just so emotional and angry, right? They felt forgotten by us. And they saw all the other work that was being done in this district, and they felt forgotten. And they demanded and said, where are we in this district? And we made sure that they were not forgotten, right? We said, we're coming, we're coming. And we were there, and we came for them, right? And so when I, when I drive by there, I was like, we went into their football field, and then we had roll lights in there. And I was like, oh, no. And then we didn't have seats, right? It was like, now they have it all. And when I drive by there, I'm like, praise the Lord, they got it all, right? I'm like, wow, this is, this is it. I see the pride in that school, right? So I'm just, that one really warms my heart when I go by there. I'm like, wow. I do have a question about the Rosemont Field. Was any of that covered by insurance?
Rosemont was a warranty settlement.
Okay. I kind of thought maybe it might be because it wasn't so...
We settled on a lower price.
Okay, I wanted to make sure that that was the case because it...
That's one thing, I don't know if it came across, but your staff is so good at confronting, and their oversight is just amazing.
Awesome.
You should be really proud of them.
I am very proud. Thank you. Because I know it wasn't too old, and so, thank you. I appreciate that. When I saw that, I was like, wait a minute, that wasn't that old. So I appreciate that. Where are we at with Q and R? Are we done?
We are not done. Albert Einstein is, when the roof is done, then we will move on to the core academic, which will include interior finishes, exterior paint, front landscaping, sustainable front landscaping, and new furniture at the site. That'll be our highlight next year for Q. We also are continuing to do telecenter, which is clocks and intercoms, you know, the things we need to do but aren't exciting.
Throughout the district.
We're, we've done, we have 10 schools currently kicking off and in construction. We have the product ordered, and we think with the budget, we can do two or three more. And then we have to, we'll use the rest of the money for pool fixes at JFK, Hiram Johnson, and McClatchy. Unsure on the scope there for being a big hole that holds water. They're overly complicated because it's, the cheap is not going to make it work for us, and expensive is outside of our space. So we're gonna, we're working on that scope right now, but that will finish off Q. We think next summer will be the last summer of Q, and then about eight months to wrap up all the financials. And then there's an audit, so there's really a year and a half, I think, right?
Okay, well, I can't wait to see what we can do with H. We know we worked really hard on that one, and what's to come next now? Only time will tell. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchett. Ms. Villa?
Just a few quick things here. Always hats off to the whole team. We've been talking about this, you know, facility plan, it's award-winning. You guys have really gone above and beyond to make these changes for our students, our staff. I still remember when I was talking to Principal Frank, and he really wanted at Elder Creek that path and to have that there. I just drove by it on the way here today, and it just looks awesome. I mean, it's, it looks like somewhere that you would just, the kids out there having lunch, walking around, they hit the whole play structure. It's amazing. But that track was really important to them because before it was a mud pit. So thank you for that. I just have one quick question, which is on page 10. The security fencing on multiple sites, we've been talking about the safety fencing for, I feel like, two years now, so I just, can you give me, like, what kind of, what sites we have them implemented or plan to implement them on?
Yes. Last summer, we completed seven sites.
I know, sorry, I'm putting you on the phone with everything.
Can I send you, I can send a refresher of what sites?
Yes.
This currently, we are just started within the last week. We have 11 sites, I believe, going. We have Elder, no, excuse me, Rosemont and Isador Cohen going to one phase, currently started. Fern Bacon is also just currently started. So all of our middle schools, they have that similar footprint to Einstein. We'll get the Einstein fencing approach.
Awesome.
But also includes the new, the door buzzer concept that we've come up with that ties into the phone and makes it a secured, single access.
Love that.
For our visitors during school days, and our staff can feel comfortable being able to screen through who comes on our campuses. And then there's a separate phase outside of facilities but in security that is going to continue the work, and maybe they can provide an update at a, in a board communication or something.
Thank you. I know a lot of our families and I'm sure staff and students, that's really important for us is that safety component, so thank you for doing that. And anything that you can send me on that, I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you, Ms. Villa. Mr. Kayata?
So thanks again to the team for really implementing these bonds in a way that I'm sure is beyond the expectations of our community. We have our big projects, but we have our small projects, and even the smallest projects, they're all done right. You know, I live right next to Caroline Wenzel. I drive by multiple times a day. That fence could have just been a new fence, but it's beautiful and it defines Green Haven Drive now when you drive down it. I know Matsuyama is super excited to be getting their fence because they've seen the other fencing is done so well. So no, only security, but also kind of overall school improvement. And just really wanted to give a huge shout out to the Oversight Committee. Really glad we have you presenting here. I know it's more work than we probably see, and it's necessary so that if we go back out for another bond, we can say with a straight face, you know, we spent our funds right. And I really, really appreciate that you're giving us kind of that oversight that we need because otherwise, you know, people don't trust government to spend money. But I, from everything I've seen here, we are spending this bond money so well, and thank you for confirming that for us.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other mentions from my colleagues? Thank you very much. We're moving on to the next item. 11.1. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. I'd like to start tonight with a huge note of congratulations to our incredible facility staff led by Chris Ralston and Nathaniel Browning. This week, we learned SAC City Unified will receive the California School Board Association's Golden Bell Award for Equity and Access based on our Facilities Master Plan Index. Yes, yes, yes. Thank you. The Facilities Master Plan Index was designed to intentionally interrupt the status quo. By prioritizing projects using the Equity Index, historically underserved neighborhoods and students are receiving an equitable share of capital projects, bond funds for the first time. This work has already taken shape in many of the projects that you've heard about tonight happening in our district, including rebuilding of Oak Ridge, Elder Edward Kimball, Nicholas and Caesar Chavez. Congratulations to our incredible staff for yet another award for this groundbreaking Another celebration of facility improvements happened this past weekend at Woodbine Elementary as part of the Green Apple Day of Service. With help of Balfour Betty Construction, the school community created an outdoor classroom and learning gardens for the students. Green Apple Day of Service is an international movement of nearly a million volunteers in 80 countries to celebrate the central role that schools play in preparing the next generation of global leaders in sustainability. Thank you to our Sustainability Manager, Chamberlain Seacrest, for her role in bringing this together. It's a wonderful event. Also, Jennifer Kretschman and the Student Attendance and Engagement Team also hosted a successful Attendance Awareness Month Community Fair at Serna Center on Saturday as well. This was an opportunity for our community to connect with our partners and to be entertained by our very talented student performers, all while promoting the importance of coming to school each day and every day. While I am, yes, very good. Yes, 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 yes. Lots of love. While I am recognizing staff for incredible work, I'd also like to give a huge shout out to our College and Career Readiness Team for their successful College and Career Fair held at Hiram Johnson High School late last month. Christina Espinoza, Jackie Navarez, and the entire team put together a fabulous event that allowed hundreds of our students to meet the college and trade skills representatives from across the country. It was well-organized and beneficial to our students. And thank you to our HR, Human Resources Team for being there to represent our district and to recruit open staff positions. I would also like to highlight our Special Education Town Hall Series, which wrapped up late last week to highlight our joint improvement plan with the Black Parallel School Board. As the board is aware, we reached a settlement agreement with Black Parallel School Board that will result in some positive changes district-wide and help us to begin to address the significant disproportionality that has plagued our special education program. If any of our families missed the virtual town hall, we have the video available on our SAC City website under our latest news section, and it will be shared in our next SAC City Scroll newsletter. And I would end, I will end with a couple of upcoming community events. The Food Literacy Center at Floyd Farms will be hosting a Harvest Festival on Saturday, November 4. This event will include free meals and snacks, a free kids' farmer's market, garden activities, games, live music, a petting zoo, cooking demonstrations, and student performances. Also, the McClaskey Adult Center Fall Plant Sale is happening tomorrow. Friday... Friday, October the 6th, from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. This is an opportunity to support the wonderful work of our adult students by purchasing some of the more than 100 indoor and outdoor plants that will be available, wow, at McClasky. Jeez. Okay, last but not, certainly not least, I would like to welcome our new CBO to Sac City Unified School District, Ms. Janay Markings.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. President's report. I just appreciate everybody having grace and being gentle and kind with this whole thing. And I'm just going to say, not as the president, but as a member of the executive team, I really want us to start working on all of us being comfortable sitting in this chair. Should not have to be a struggle. Tonight wasn't a struggle because I feel loved, but it shouldn't have to be a learning experience the minute it happens. So I, I really do appreciate you guys being kind and gentle with me this evening. And I will stop speaking because I have nothing else to say other than... Next up, Mr. Singh.
You did great. I've given a heads up to our superintendent about this statement, and it's, it's a little heavy. And I don't expect the community to understand aspects of what I'm going to say, but it's coming from my space as who I am and the community that I come from. So I just ask you to listen, and I ask the community to kind of understand the plight of what we go through as, as a Sikh community and also as folks who come from refugee and asylum-seeking communities. So I'll just start. I wrote a lot, and hopefully doesn't take that much time. I won't. So I'm speaking from this dais. After having witnessed the courage from my Sikh sister and Bakersfield Councilwoman, Montbreith Ghar, we are amongst only handful of electeds ever in this country who come from the Punjabi Sikh community. We carry the hopes, the dreams, and the aspirations of our community, which has been here for over 100 years, but remain disenfranchised in so many spaces. But the Central Valley from Yuba City to Bakersfield, California, this is home. It resembles home. It feels like home. It's where we come from. Last month, Canadian Prime Minister Justin Trudeau confirmed that the Canadian intelligence believes that the Indian government was involved in the assassination of Bhairav Deep Singh Nijjar, a Canadian citizen murdered on June 18th in the parking lot of the Gurunani Sikh Gordwara House of Worship located in Surrey, British Columbia, a prominent suburb of Vancouver. A Gordwara where he was president, not only was his sovereignty as a citizen taken from him in his own home country, but it was taken from his place of worship, a sovereign space of sanctuary for Sikhs. The United States and Canada are home to the largest Sikh communities outside of the Indian state of Punjab. The Sacramento region is home to one of the largest Sikh population in the United States with many new arrivals who arrived here on political asylum during the 1980s and 1990s when the government, when the community was enduring state-sponsored genocide at the hands of the Indian government. With the rise of Hindutva, a Hindu nationalist movement under Prime Minister Modi, we have seen a rise in asylum seekers, including children here in Sacramento City Unified School District. The Sikh community has been sounding the alarm on Indian state intelligence involvement in the United States for decades. Just last month, the FBI contacted Sikh activists in California that our lives or their lives were at risk and that we should exercise extreme caution in our homes. What happened in Canada cannot occur here in the United States with the US citizens. We have large refugee and asylum-seeking communities here in Sacramento, be they Sikh, Ukrainian, Syrian, or otherwise. While we have much work to do as a nation, one thing we provide in this country is the right to the freedom of speech and the freedom of expression, the right to inform us of the atrocities that our communities have faced. Let me reiterate that the peaceful advocacy for independence and/or raising voices for human rights should never be equated to a blasphemous claim of terrorism. But the assassination of a citizen by foreign actors is an act against the sovereignty of a citizen, our constitution, and it's an act of state-sponsored terrorism. What happened in Canada, like I said, cannot occur here in the US with the US citizen. I want to encourage the community to learn about these struggles of those who come to this country escaping harrowing circumstances. This is not my seat. This is a people's seat. I've been put here by community, community that looks like me, but also community that doesn't look like me, but respects the fact that I will speak up regardless of the situation. I know, and I want our children and parents to know that you are safe here. This is your home, and I will never shy away from speaking the truth and speaking up for you. Thank you.
Much appreciated, sir. Ms. Villa, floor is yours.
I was just going to say, thank you, Madam Vice President. You did a phenomenal job tonight for stepping up to the plate at the last minute. But thank you. You did a great job. That's all.
I'll be the last to speak. So I'm going to speak as a board member, not the president. Even though I missed the day to have lunch with loves at Oak Park Elementary, today was the day that we saw out Mother Oak on our grounds. But I, I'm just wishing her well. With the new construction that we're doing there, she has to go, but she's going to live on in our buildings. So she will be tributed in a beautiful way. I just apologize to my, my Oak Ridge folks. Sorry I missed that today. But that's really important for us to recognize. Things change, but that doesn't mean that things have to get harder. So she'll be there. She's right up the street, so I can like see her from my house. So now that she's going, it's going to be okay. So we are good to go on that. Anybody else? No, you're holding your button down. We got buttons. Okay, and we're moving on to Consent Agenda. Oh, we have Mr. Vladny coming up. I got to look at more often. How you doing, sir?
Good evening again. Really quickly, I was looking at the consent list. Under Special Education, there is a bid for 200 overhead projectors, which, thinking of the experience of both special education instructors in the classroom as well as the needs of their students, overhead projectors in and of themselves are kind of antiquated technology, often wired and often not overhead. You know, looking at the LCD or LED TVs in the room, you know, with so many of them being smart TVs, not only in special education classrooms, but also just in general education classrooms, provides a lot more collaborative experience, especially for special education teachers where they can be mobile to meet the needs of the students where they are. But also, if we are talking about energy consumption and conservation, overhead projectors and the lamps that come with them are both costly as well as an inefficient use of energy. So I also think about a lot of our buildings that are finger-style buildings, long corridors where we have one-to-one inkjet printers for our teachers, the, you know, unnecessary use of toner, buildings that have setups such as like pods that can have a central copier available to teachers to print in a much more efficient manner. So I just, you know, hope that as we continue to move forward, looking at facilities, we won't look at just the beautiful parts of the outside, but also how they actually operate. Many of our antiquated buildings have brick walls, which are obstacles and impedance to wireless signals, which means we have to have almost one-to-one, sometimes two-to-one in a classroom for wireless access points, and also just strength, signal strength degradation between class spaces. So I'm just asking that, you know, if we speak again to the languages in our agendas and our actions and resolutions, let's look holistically so we really can continue to be, you know, real adequate users of our resources available. Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night. So how do we feel about talking about that? We should probably have a little talk about that. So we had a motion. We had a second. So we need to vote on whether we can continue, maybe have a conversation to pull this, but we need to.
If a member wants to pull an item for discussion, you can just request. You don't have to vote on that. If you want to pull an item, and then you can vote to approve the remainder of the calendar.
Okay. So Member Singh wants to pull, and I'm not sure which item number that is. We all look to Taylor because he knows. No? I guess, yeah. Okay. So we're going to pull 12.1A? But, oh, no, no, sorry. The one that says specifically Special Education Implement. So it is within 12.1A on the Consent Agenda. And it is, it appears to be, it's 159,860. Okay, in SIR3 funds to approve projectors and portable projector screens to provide educational technology for special education students and staff that aids in regular and substantive educational interactions between students and their special education service providers and special education department staff and families. So it's action item B21. Had to read the whole thing. So we're going to remove B21, and then we're going to vote on the Consent Agenda with that missing. Ms. Pritchett moves. Ms. Villa, seconds. Roll call.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Coyote?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
All right. I'm just reading this, so something that was just brought up, and thank you for bringing to our attention. I think the conversation is really exactly what was brought to us is, are these pieces, are these items the most effective items that would, would be needed for the students? And the question is really, who do we ask if this is indeed the best? I'm looking at, do I want to call Nathaniel up?
Mr. Browning? Do you have an answer for this? Or Mr. Ralston?
Welcome.
Hello, again. Not being overly familiar with the purchasing department of other parts. We would probably... This is a hard one. It's not energy efficient or inefficient. We looked, Mr. Castillo and I looked up the rec real quick. They're, they're just small little projectors that can be moved around. I'm not sure how special education would use them. We don't install projectors anymore in our schools. So we don't, we don't recognize, we recognize the inefficiencies with projectors in the education setting now. We, we have the TVs on carts. But I'm not sure there's a better, best answer for this one because I'm not sure how special education would be using them and/or if they need to be portable because they may travel from site to site. No large TV on a cart would not be conducive to that. TV on a cart also is $4,000. These are $694 apiece.
Thank you. I, I thought we're past the TV on carts, but that's a childhood thing for me. I think what I could suggest, and just, just a thought for all of us, is maybe we can get a little bit more answers on this specific piece if we want to dive in and just find out who can provide us more details on how these projectors will be used. But just in general from a, we just had a large conversation about energy and climate. So I don't, if we can wait to get some answers and then bring this up again or see if there's any alternatives considering the conversation we had today.
Going to look over at our CAO, Yvonne. Can this wait until the 19th, or do you have anything to say? So we can hold this and bring it back on the 19th?
I would just, unless there's other, has anybody else clicked anything? Okay, so let's do that first.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Villa, floor?
Thank you. These are $640, Special Education Department. And I've said this multiple times, when we make choices on this dais because we are not educators in the classroom, this impacts students. This impacts their needs in an everyday situation. So because we don't have enough information about what these are used for, I guarantee they're being used to serve our students in the most appropriate way. Our special education, like this, I'm not, I'm not happy that this was pulled because, again, any delays, we don't, we don't know those delays off the top of our head. But what if there actually is a major impact? If we wait until the next board meeting, and then we have to wait again to order these items? That impacts students. And I'm not comfortable pushing something back that impacts our students who need it the most. So that is my thought process. I am not wanting to move this to the 19th.
Thank you. Ms. Jean?
I'm trying to process this, thinking like as a teacher, I use a TV on a cart. They have come back, Member Singh. TVs on carts have come back. Of course, now they're big flat-screen TVs. So they're a little different than when we went to school. But I use that daily, and that was the replacement in my district from projectors that we had used, you know, on a regular basis. Projectors are vital in the, some kind of projection ability is vital in education. I could literally not do the job that I do without having access to that. And I'm thinking about our special education and how often they are holding IEPs in random places and situations, trying to find rooms for these all-important meetings for our students. And you need to be able to look at documentation together and read through documentation together. So I'm assuming that these projectors are part, I mean, that's one use that's in my head offhand from my lived experience. I, I don't know if the delay of two weeks is going to be a huge, huge issue or hiccup. And I recognize and validate the idea of as we start moving towards not just carbon neutral, but all these different things, how do we be more responsible with our resources while we are also recognizing the limits on our financial resources? So that's where I'm at in my head, meaning I'm okay approving this with us all in mind, thinking, great, moving forward. The district is very aware that the school board is interested in having these conversations and not holding this up tonight. I'm also okay waiting two weeks if our chief, I really should know all your titles. I'm so sorry. If Yvonne is good with like two weeks, Academic Officer, and if our interim super is okay with that too. So I'm okay voting either way. I just, yeah, sorry. Tired. I'm done.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yeah, thank you. I, I do, I'm, I'm kind of torn in a sense, and I get what you're saying. But I do think we should approve this and then with the thought that we are going to have discussions of moving forward, that we're going to have these conversations of, that we are going to be moving forward of having conversations with our special ed department and making sure that we are not going to be using projectors for the use of our students and what are these being used for? Because I agree that the projectors are being used for the, the use of, for IEP meetings. And we don't know if they, I mean, these things break all the time. And we don't know if that's the case. Are they transferring them from site to site? We don't know if that's the case. Are they, you know, we, we don't know. We don't know what's happening at this point. So I feel comfortable with moving forward and then having those deep conversations with each site and having our staff do that.
Thank you. Mr. Coyote?
Yeah, I think I'm glad we talked about this because we are trying to set a direction, especially in line with the conversation we just had about, you know, climate change and facilities. I don't think this particular item is that, though. I think we should just go ahead and approve it. I just mentioned to Member Singh, this kind of makes me feel like, what if someone were to look at my office and come in and say, well, why do you have two monitors? to look at my office and come in and say, well, why do you have two monitors? Like, well, I need two monitors, you don't know my job. I was just in a special ed classroom like last week, and they had projected on the wall a huge movie for the kids to watch, projected, you know, I don't think this is necessarily overhead projectors, this is projectors. I was at back-to-school night, and my, both my kids' teachers were projecting the slideshow on the wall. So I think this is kind of not the detail that the Board should be in, I think we should just go ahead and approve it, but to the extent that, you know, we're getting out data technology, sure. I don't get the sense that that's what we're doing here, though. I would move that we approve this.
Thank you. We're still, Mr. Singh?
All right, I know it's tedious to pull something off consent, but that's the entire purpose of the conversation, so I think it's important to at least bring it up. And yes, I know projectors are important, and I used to have a projector in my classroom, and I used it extensively, and also read Ultra Portable. I just think, I will, I'm not really pushing back, I'm just saying this quote's from July 13th, and we signed off, the other person, the president of the other organization has signed off on September 18th. So it's obviously been in the works for a while, so I just wanna push back on the urgency piece, because urgency is important, but it's also $160,000. And I know that we have been up here and talked about a much lesser amount for an extensive period of time. So it's just part of us doing more, but I also see that the quote expires in six days. So I understand that as well. So I'm just glad we're having a conversation, but it's something to look into, and I would hope that we can have answers to this from the appropriate staff members in the future to address it immediately.
I appreciate your comment. Microphone's over here. I actually wanna speak from a place of trauma related to projectors. If you think about the children, and I'm not 100% sure, Mr. Gladney, so maybe I'm putting words in your mouth, but what I think about when I think of projector is that hot metal light bulb, this thing, all the wrong kids are in the wrong class who, like, I almost see it as like a cultural concern that we might be considering our special ed students being, or our special ed department utilizing projectors that, like, for me, it draws up trauma. It reminds me of being in a classroom, and it was the wrong classroom, and those projectors were only for the special kids. Now, when I look in here, I don't see exactly what kind of projector it is, and I haven't been in a classroom in a very long time, so I couldn't tell you, but I do understand the need to wanna hear more about it, but it sounds like it's something that we really should be looking into, considering for a vote, perhaps. I feel like we might need to move it because we don't order projectors for ourselves. We have somebody who has the expertise and the experience and knows what they're ordering, but, you know, part of me is, usually when Mr. Gladney talks, I revert back to my childhood, thanks, Mr. Gladney, but it does make sense that, you know, is it worth it for us to order something like this for our students? We have to trust that that's most likely what's going to happen. This is not a wasted opportunity to purchase something for a classroom for our students. So I'm gonna put my trauma aside, and I'm gonna move to vote for this, but I hope that we consider that we do move it forward and in the future, maybe get a breakdown of what some of these devices are and what they're used for, so that we have a better understanding. Because I'm just flipping through the book, I see it's Panasonic, and it's a projector, and it's made by, the Bloom Company is distributing it, and that's all I have. So maybe a little more information for the Board in the future, but I'd like to move that to vote.
Member Jean.
Aye.
Member Kayata. Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pritchett. Member Singh.
Aye.
Member Villa.
Aye.
I have not looked at the clock once, and I think that we're doing really well. Item 13.0, Business and Financial Information Reports. I am understanding that I have received that information. Future board meetings, item 14.0, October 19th, 2023, closed session, 5 o'clock. And will that switch our start time here? It'll still be? Okay, 6:30 board meeting? I mean, open session. And then November 2nd, 2023, 5:00 p.m., closed session, 6:30, open session. Item 15, Adjournment.
Move to adjourn at 9:08, exactly, which is what it says in the packet. So I think we should share all of our meetings.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned. Hold on.